Call the meeting in order with staff for a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Madam Clerk, please call.
Trustee Bell.
Yes.
Trustee Brewer.
Yes.
Trustee Grant.
Yes.
Trustee Kaczynski.
Yes.
Trustee Williams.
Yes.
Trustee Bell.
Yes.
Okay. Item number three, a motion to release certain previous approved executive. Okay. All right, item number three, motion to release certain previous approved executive Item number four then, motion to approve the general proceeds for the special board meeting for February the fourth, two thousand and twenty.
So moved.
Moved by trustee Todd, seconded by trustee Jezeski. Any questions?
Trustee Bell.
Yes.
Trustee Brewer.
Yes.
Trustee Grant.
Yes.
Trustee Kaczynski.
Yes.
Trustee Todd.
Yes.
Trustee Williams.
Yes.
Trustee Bell.
Yes.
Next item, motion to approve the general proceeds for the regular board meeting of January twenty eighth, twenty two thousand and twenty.
So moved.
Moved by trustee Bell, seconded by trustee Jezeski. Any questions? Madam Clerk.
Trustee Brewer.
Yes.
Trustee Grant.
Yes.
Trustee Kaczynski.
Yes.
Trustee Todd.
Yes.
Trustee Williams.
Yes.
Trustee Bell.
Yes.
Motion carried. Item number C, motion to approve the general proceeds for the committee meeting of the whole on January twenty first, two thousand and twenty.
So moved.
Moved by trustee Todd, seconded by trustee Bell. Are there any questions? Madam Clerk.
Trustee Grant.
Yes.
Trustee Kaczynski.
Yes.
Trustee Todd.
Yes.
Trustee Williams.
Yes.
Trustee Bell.
Yes.
Motion carried. Okay, we get the public comment, which we're getting to do now. I appreciate everyone that comes up and for the public comment, I put some hand sanitizer right there. Would you please use it before you touch the mic? Just a precaution, I'd like to err the caution. So would you please use the sanitizer before you touch the microphone and. Hey, 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 okay, so, so please use that. The public comment or question comments will be directed to the mayor and I will answer all comments at the end of the comments and it will be three minutes and as always, no rebuttals, counter replies or arguments will be tolerated. Please state your name.
Judy Cast here.
Ms. Cast, would you use the.
I'm not touching the mic.
But you're touching.
Okay.
Maybe I should say everybody that comes up there because somebody's gonna come behind you and touch the same podium, is what basically, basically what I'm saying. I just don't wanna.
No problem.
It's the same to everyone, not just you and not directed just at you.
Judy Cast here. First of all, I'd like to say it's the second week in a row, there's different agendas. My agenda does not read the way yours reads. It's missing parts or I, I don't know, and I don't understand the reasoning behind having two different agendas. Secondly, I would like to thank Mr. Weller and his department for their excellent work while they were out plowing and what have you during the snow. Haven't seen him to talk to him since. Thirdly, I, for those of you that don't know, and I don't know why we're not being told, but our previous fire chief, Alstov Reagan, is in the hospital and our prayers go out Since we are at the top of the agenda, it's difficult to post questions on what might be coming up during the meeting, therefore I have nothing negative to say tonight. Thank you.
Could you show me the agenda that you're talking about? Okay, because what she said was right, but that is the problem. I had, I had three different ones, so I picked one.
I said I'm not touching the phone. I just want to say thank you to the mayor and to Kevin Weller and the Public Works Department for updating the marquee. It's great to have current information up there and I hope it continues. And the only other thing I'd like to see up there is the dates that we have meetings. I still have talked to a number of people that don't know when the meetings are, so it might be a good idea to put something up there.
Yes, sir. Okay. My name is Charles Pumandexler and president of Deer Creek Homeowners Association. I've been a resident of Salt Village for twenty-six years. You know, I see my home value drop from two hundred and sixty thousand dollars to a hundred and seventy thousand twenty-six years I've been here. Being a retired construction engineer, you know, I took notes and walked around my subdivision. You know, we have fire hydrants that haven't been painted since I've been there in twenty-six years. I have street lights that are out. I have thirty-nine day treatments for the last two years. I have a concerned resident at nine fourteen Mary Burner Drive who hasn't, has been without half her driveway for a year and a half. You know, the average homeowner in Deer Creek pays eighty-five hundred dollars a year in taxes. It's a hundred and seven homes. That comes up to over nine hundred and nine thousand a year that the residents in Deer Creek pay for taxes. I mean, I know the village don't get all that money, but if they get half of it, it's four hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars. If the villagers get a third, it's three hundred and three thousand, okay? And in my twenty-six years, I have seen no infrastructure work done in Deer Creek. Mary Burner Drive need to be patched and overlaid from Cottage Grove to Indy Lane. The road is in very bad shape. There are six sidewalks, squares that are heaved up eight to nine inches. Any kid running, fall, you're talking about a sixty thousand dollar lawsuit, I'm sure your attorney could agree, that could happen if a kid just fall in. And three years ago, I, I met with, at the board meeting here, I came and I gave the mayor, the trustee and the public works director the square footage of how many sidewalks needed to be replaced. You know, I missed the last board meeting, but we all talked about doing this forensic audit spending two hundred and forty thousand dollars and our village is falling apart. I'd like to know when the deeds are gonna be done after serving residence being the president of Deer Creek Homes Association.
As far as, let me start off at the beginning. As far as the police chief being in the hospital, he just went there since the last time, but fire chief, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Ex-fire chief. And I don't announce things like that because I don't know if that's a family matter. So, but since you do know about it, then if you would like to pay him a visit or contact someone in his family, it's fine, but I don't disseminate that type of mystery, cousin mystery, for him being in the hospital, so I mean, but yes, he is. And if anybody like to go see him, I'm sure they would have to. I mean, I think can go there, I think he, I don't know if he's a, I think he could still have regular visitors, so I don't think it's gonna be a problem. You're very welcome as far as the, and I'm sure the public works can say you're welcome too for how you, the person that says thank you for the updates and the marquee. We try to do that, but if something happens, that wouldn't be our top priority is this marquee, so we have other problems quite naturally, they're gonna take president over the marquee, but we're gonna try to keep the marquee up to date as much as we possibly can. As far as in Deer Creek and I'm sure between the village administrator and public works, they're gonna, the public works director will be leaving out right after the, after the reports are done. He heard everything you had to say. I will tell you this, there's something in the works right now to not just Deer Creek, but throughout the village that we're gonna try to address some of these problems with not just streets, but trees, sidewalks and lighting. So that's something that is gonna be, gonna, we're gonna start now. Now, I asked him for a vote today so we can go follow with some of this, these quotes so we can get some of this work done. And it has been a while over there because I have never seen anything in the streets other than patches, so, but it comes at a cost and it does come at a cost. Okay. With that being said, I'll move on to reports. As you saw today, and we're gonna try to do this for, for a while, it's air of caution. We don't know, I've got, I've talked to several people in health industry and I've mentioned two seminars about the coronavirus. It's not a joke and I hope no one takes it that way, so if you're asked to use a sanitizer, please do so because, you know, especially with seniors, you guys should carry, carry that in your pocket because we're most, we're more susceptible than most people, anyone over sixty, when any type of respiratory disease is very vulnerable to this virus. So if you, you know, you should, I would carry it with me, but as they told us a lot of times, you can wash your hands as much as you possibly can. There's nothing wrong with continuing to wash your hands because you can transfer it just by touching something, you can touch it in your mouth. So that's something that, that I don't take lightly and I do fall under some of those categories that you may be more susceptible than others. Yesterday, there was a meeting here, asking, and there was a lot of people here, not yesterday, I'm sorry. Today, there was a meeting here and then, yes, it was a meeting here, yesterday also.
It was yesterday.
It was yesterday too. Yeah, another meeting. And this is, a lot of questions are being, and a lot of things are being asked about. We're trying to come, trying to get underway with our housing and trying to make sure that we can get some of these homes taken care of, either brought, find out what it takes if somebody wants to purchase a home that's in disarray, find out if we can get a clear title. And lastly, and it's always the last step is to actually demolish, but I like to keep that as the last resort of demolishing anything because once you do that, you know, you can't come back from that. So we're trying to get the land banks, there's several land banks, get involved, but my question was, how's a person that wants to buy a home that's under a certain amount can acquire a home in the, in the village? Because a lot of mortgage companies don't want to go under six thousand dollars and they told me there were progress for that. So if you want to, after the meeting is over with, I'll have some of this information readily available and also it'll be available at the village at any time to come up and pick up some information that you can make some of the phone calls to find out about homeownership and that's, you know, anyone that wants to, to go into that, I mean, it's always good to own your home and, but a lot of times there may be obstacles and you don't, you don't know what those obstacles are until you actually start getting involved in them, but they are there and they're there to help homeownership. That's about all that I have. I just wanted to make everyone aware that I don't know how many times I can say about this coronavirus, please, please caution, air of caution. It's not, you can't wash your hands enough and you can't use the sanitizer enough. As a matter of fact, some places don't even have sanitizer left. They're waiting on another shipment to come in, so, you know, it's just, it's just something that you should do. They're canceling a lot of different public events, they're canceling a lot of things where people gather a hundred or more, so obviously it's something that's important and we're telling, we're finding out we don't have enough kits in Illinois to test everyone, so like I stated before, I don't think it's an epidemic, but I'm not a, a, a health person, I'm a health administrator, so I don't know, but if, if people are, and if the stock market is affected by it, it must be something that's really, really, would keep that sanitizer with me and I would also wash my hands as much as possible. That being said, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have one thing to report and that is it is time for the CDVG, CDVG grant to be completed. The board of trustees voted to submit an application a couple of weeks ago, so I am working on that application and I truly appreciate our village engineer for his assistance in that role. Know that the application is due this coming Friday and we anticipate meeting that deadline.
Okay. Village administrator, Mrs. Chris White.
Hopefully everybody can hear me, but I'll get the mic in a second. Just to continue, I mean, there's a lot of activity as we've gone on the past week and a half, however, I want to think of just echo and help and I just want to commend my chief of police and chief of fire as we talk about it, while we're focusing on the fires, we're also focusing on, we'll be installing our defibrillators around here very soon and the chief has been, chief of police has made sure all of us are CPR certified, so as we do focus on the fires, we also still need to focus on other elements that might be of interest, you know, as well, but that's all for today.
Is it gonna be a class on how to use the defibrillator?
Oh, absolutely. The chief of police has actually trained, and you can echo on that later about that, but in here, we're probably an extra group of people that's gonna be done, I know they're gonna take care of our public works and then we're gonna be an extra group. And so that goes with all the corporate authorities as well. If you are interested in being trained for CPR and also how to use the defibrillators, we would definitely encourage you, we'll make sure we get those dates out for you as well.
Is that it?
Yeah, that's it for me right now.
Village engineer, Mr. Jim Sarn.
Thank you, Mayor. Like to give an update on some of our projects in progress. First of all, the I-394 water main replacement project, we have received the approved IEP construction permit last week. The project is in final QAQC and is likely to bid, be bid early next month. The West Elevated Tank Paint Project, the project is in QAQC and that is likely to be bid in April or May. The 221st Street Culvert Replacement, we have applied to the IDNR for floodway permitting. The project is in final QAQC and that's also likely bid in April or May. And finally, the logistics center study, the project is thirty percent complete. We are hoping to get feedback from CN Railroad towards the ends of the month and the study is expected to be completed in December. And that concludes my report, Mayor. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Treasury report, Mr. Anthony Finch.
I'm sorry, why you doing that? You might as well pass it back now. The village attorney, Mr. Mike McGrath.
That's all right, Mayor. I'll report.
Good evening, Mayor, Madam Clerk, trustees. As of today, we have the following balances. In the corporate account, we have five hundred and twenty-four thousand, four hundred and twenty-eight dollars. The reserve account is eight hundred and fourteen thousand. The senior center is four thousand, three hundred and forty-nine dollars. Water sewer is six hundred and ninety-one thousand, nine hundred and fourteen dollars. The water sewer EPay account is two hundred and nineteen thousand, six hundred and fifty-four dollars. The line of credit is three hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars for a total available cash of two million, six hundred and forty thousand, three hundred and forty-five dollars. In the restricted fund account, the CNA, CN account, we have forty-two thousand. The DEA account, we have a hundred and fifty-nine thousand, three hundred and forty dollars. South Village Housing Account, one thousand, four hundred and twenty-seven dollars. The TIF account, five hundred and ninety thousand, seven hundred and twenty dollars. The tow-in account, thirteen thousand, seven hundred and sixty dollars. The holding money laundry account, eighteen thousand, two hundred and thirty-three dollars. The spending drug account, twenty-four thousand, two hundred and seventy-seven dollars. Your spending money laundry account, eight hundred and ninety-nine dollars. The MFT account, two hundred and ninety thousand, four hundred and ninety-one dollars for a total restricted funds of one million, ninety-nine thousand, one hundred and forty-seven dollars. That concludes my report.
All right, Mr. Williams, I'm sorry, Mr. Finch.
Yes.
Is there a way, can you give us, can you provide a copy to the board?
Yes.
We, you know, in their, in their boxes.
Yes, I'm ready this evening.
Okay. Reports of the Department of Finance and Administration.
Thank you again, Mayor, Madam Clerk, the board. The accounts payable and payroll disbursement as of March tenth is as follows. Payroll for the week of February twenty-eighth, twenty twenty was a hundred and ninety-five thousand, seventy-seven dollars and seventy-seven cents. The accounts payable that's gonna be asked to approve for this evening is in the amount of two hundred and thirty-one thousand, four hundred and thirty, two hundred and thirty-one thousand, four hundred and thirty-two dollars and ninety-three cents for a total disbursement of four hundred and twenty-six thousand, five hundred and ten dollars and seventy cents. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Fire Department Chief Stephen Barrett.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd just like to touch on a couple of things real quick. One is this coronavirus I am part of, there's a lot of state agencies that's being put on standby, one is such as Illinois Medical Emergency Response Team, which I am a part of, is due to the fact that a lot of our hospital resources are being overtaxed and overwhelmed with a lot of these incidents that's happening. But the number one thing is that the flu is still hurting more people than this virus. And so one thing that I just wanted to make mention, I know we talked about using the hand sanitizer, the hand sanitizer is not gonna save you from everything, so they recommend that after the third use of the hand sanitizer, that you actually wash your hands because after that third use, you're just collecting bacteria on your hands. The fire department has responded to twenty-nine calls for the service period of February twentieth through March fifth, there were no major incidents. We did have one, one of our firemen, Jordan Roy, completed his training through Perry's Day College and graduated on last Tuesday and we're just awaiting his final test results. We currently have two firefighters in our academy, in the academy that should be graduating within the next couple of months and I'm happy to say that after these next two graduate, we will have, our department will be, everyone in our department will be fully certified through the state of Illinois. Not too many departments can actually say that and when I say that they're fully certified, they, they are fully certified and I'm really happy about that. The other thing is, Mr. Williams talked about the defibrillators. We were able to get a defibrillator for every building in our community, such as community center, public works, fire department and the community center. And we were really blessed to get these because when favor go out, favor comes back. And so the people that gave us these actually really blessed us, so I just wanted to thank the police chief for his hard work with helping me with this and that concludes my report.
Chief, are you saying that these fibrillators that we got were given to us, we didn't have to pay for?
No, that's not what I'm saying. They were very, very discounted.
Okay, that's just one, I just.
Very, very discounted.
Okay, that's good.
And we got an upgrade.
Okay, thank you. Police, well, Police Department Chief White.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Village Board, trustees. Just to add to the fire chief's comments concerning that, yeah, we did get them at a discount. Also, of course, the training is coming as a discount as well. You're welcome. But what it means to the citizens is this, it's not just about the ones that are inside of each municipal building. What it means is all of your firefighters as well as your police officers have renewed their certifications for first aid and the use of the AED and because he was able to get such a great deal, we were able to get more. So now, when you dial nine-one-one and someone is having a medical emergency that might require an AED, the police officer who shows up will also have one in his car. And so this way, yes, we will still be calling for an ambulance, however, if you are in immediate need and distress in the middle of having cardiac arrest, we will be helping because seconds count. And I don't want to teach the entire class over again, but yes, it's, it's seconds count when it comes to cardiac arrest. So that is what he means by getting, I mean, really, a really good deal on this so that we can have the additional ones so that when the officers show up at your residence, should someone be in the middle of having cardiac arrest, we are there to help immediately. So with that being said, also, I did send a press release out as well as to the village board concerning shooting investigation from the twenty-seventh on the early morning hours on the eighteen-hundred block of 221st Street. Anyone with any additional information, please contact our police department. Also concerning when, whenever you're contacting a dispatch center, they have now started a protocol by reading a prompt sheet from the CDC. This way, whenever our officers or our firefighters or anyone from the village responds, we will have prior knowledge of whether or not these people are having any symptoms of the virus, any flu symptoms at all, if anyone inside of the home is carrying a temperature as well as had they, because they asked, have you been outside of the country now? So at least for the next few weeks, probably months, whenever you call, while they're getting information, these are additional questions that they will ask, so please be patient. They will ask you your pertinent information initially, but they will, in addition, while we are still there, while, I mean, while we're still driving toward your residence, they will be asking you additional sort of questions so that we'll know exactly what we're walking into. what we're walking into. Um, for the period between February twenty-sixth and, uh, tonight, the Police Department responded to over three hundred and fifty calls for service. Uh, during that same, same time period, uh, we also had a total of nine arrests. Uh, Mr. Mayor, Village Board, that completes my report.
Thank you. Public Works Director, Mr. Kevin Wall.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. If I could, I would like to give a little bit of information of, uh, what's being asked every once in a while, and the public's been coming out and asking, uh, wondering why certain things aren't getting done and why isn't, why doesn't it seem like it's getting done? So I just have some totals from two thousand nineteen, so I'll give some information out here, and this is just some of the work that Public Works does, um, including with some of the stuff, just everyday work that we don't put down necessarily in, in information like this. Um, two thousand, two thousand nineteen totals, storm sewer manholes, so the street backs up, we get debris on the manholes, we have to go out there, we have to clean some manholes off. So out of two thousand nineteen season, we cleaned over two hundred forty-five manholes. Most of the debris is residential debris from grass and garbage. This is what we have to do, in overtime included. Sign work, most of these poles, most of the sign work is accidents running down our poles either during winter season, summer season, or for whatever reason. But sign work, we did thirteen poles, seventy-one sign, nine sleeves, these are, these hold the poles up, uh, three street name signs with brackets. Also during snow events, for the whole season of nineteen, we had twenty snow events. We used roughly two hundred and fifty tons of salt. These events can happen at any time, day, night, evening, weekends, especially on the holidays when everybody liked to be home, but we're out there helping everybody get around the town. Um, streetlights, we have, this year has been a, a bad year, we had a truck break down for three months. We had gotten it repaired finally when the budget was approved, so it's a little light than normal, this should be a little, a little light, a little street light, but seventeen repairs, these are poles, wires, and photocells. It seems like lately, the damage is on the wiring side or the poles are getting just knocked down. I wish to say they were blown down, they're getting knocked down by vehicles, and sometimes more than one time. Um, and then the trees, uh, we've removed and trimmed roughly seventy-two trees this year, roughly forty-some trees, and then within those forty-some trees we, we removed, we also trimmed trees around those areas. Um, two thousand nineteen water repairs, uh, was asked of how many, uh, fire hydrants that were repaired, but we'll start off with water repairs, upgrades. We had fourteen water main breaks in the year of two thousand nineteen, twenty-three clamps were put on fourteen locations. That means we had multiple breaks in one hole. Um, we had a hundred and seventy-nine feet of water main replaced, four fire hydrants, uh, two tees, which include for the fire hydrants to replace, uh, two main valves, and we did eight B-box digs, and that's for the two thousand nineteen season. We also, in the summertime, which is our worst season for the grass cutting and extra staffing, is the grass cutting. We have fifty-six locations in town, we used to have about forty-two. Um, we've had a few things added, which is we're vacant lots and some other properties that we're cutting now. We roughly cut two, four times a month. That adds up to roughly an estimated number of six hundred and seventy-two. It's probably higher than that because some locations get touched four and five times a month, depending on the season. Um, and that general is some general information on some of the general things that Public Works does. So staffing-wise, we have nine people. With those nine people, when I started here thirty-four years ago, we had nine people. The town has grown by at least a quarter of its size, and we still have nine people. So it's difficult to do a lot of extra work or more work when we don't have any money, we don't approve a budget in a timely fashion, and we don't have any money even to approve more work. So the rest of this information is just stuff we're currently doing. Um, staff has been repairing, uh, repaired a streetlight at sixteen thirty-five to sixteen Street. The wire was broken underground about two feet at the pole. ComEd still has to reconnect the wire, that light has been out for a while, so hopefully when they connect it, there won't be any more problems. Uh, two fourteen forty-three Peterson and two, and sixteen hundred Constance, they're both on either ends of Constance. These are two lights that have fault locates that we located. All the faults are damaged along the fence line, meaning that somebody drilled a fence pole in, didn't call for a Julie locate, which is they should have done before they dug, and hit the wire multiple times. So that's a replacement section of both of these. That'll take a little time, but we'll complete that, and I'll do an upgrade on that information. Staff is also still out there since the, since the economy in two thousand nine and roughly eight or so years of, of, of no money for anybody, uh, we assisted many departments doing other jobs, including maintenance on vehicles, oil changes, um, any work that anybody's asked, we try to assist as much as possible, plus we do all the setups and any sign changes. So also, staff has been working the customer service, which is our water customer service. We do water metering rings, uh, we're gonna be doing them once a month, we're gonna be doing a little bit different than this, so this is gonna take a little longer to do. The shut-off list in turn will take a little longer to do. We used to take two days, in two days, it will probably take a week and a week to do those now. So that's gonna add more time. We also let any, any comments or questions from the customers for water issues in their houses, they can call and make an appointment, so that person is daily doing that. Um, staff has also been working at the Community Center. We are trying our best to try to get in front of, um, some of the updates and some of the, um, improvements for some of the things that are gonna be happening over there. So we started on the floors, we're gonna be doing some drywall work, we have some window repairs, and a bunch of miscellaneous stuff to do in the building. That is ongoing. The rental side floor has been waxed, uh, script and waxed. The gym side right now, we're working on the game room and then the front, uh, bleacher room, which then the gym floor will be the last floor in that building. We've also been looking into a few budgetary items, which, uh, we have some doors at the wellhouses on the main, the main wellhouse on South Trail. Two of the doors on the buildings were, um, in bad condition, so we budgeted to replace them. We received three quotes, um, the quote, the one that was the best quote, we accepted, and the doors will be replaced on the twenty-sixth. And then also, last item is, uh, staff has been out pavo patching, and we understand there are some sections that seem to come apart a lot faster than others. Um, we did notice in Dare Creek that they did use a, uh, a liner or a matting system in that area there, so it looks like we got some water under the pavement, about an inch under, which is making the pop top section float in itself. So that is one of the reasons why some of that area came apart faster with this warmer weather. Uh, and that concludes my report.
Okay, two things, uh, Kevin, could you possibly get us a copy of that? When you, when you format, oh, we got, good. I mean. Oh, okay. Okay, just, okay. All right, then that's correct. Uh, I think you have a question?
A question. Uh, two weeks ago, I asked if you can give us a update on the fire hydrants. Do you have that for us? Just, you know, I guess which ones are not working, which ones are working, which one needs repair?
Um, maybe I misunderstood your reporting, you wanted to know how many that were repaired? That's what I just tried to do here.
No, 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 I mean, so, I see that you repaired, uh, four last year, but I'm saying, just the kind of status of, okay, all eighty fire hydrants, and like the status of each one. Right. Inoperable, needs to be replaced, um...
I don't have that at this time, no.
Okay. Um, reports of trustees, standing committees, Public Safety Committee, Trustee Gary Bell.
Mr. Mayor, before he begins.
Oh, we have four questions.
Mr. Uh, Mr. Vavrick had sent over an email and would like his report read, and it said included in our packet.
All right, this report comes from our, uh, as the, uh, Director. Um, thank you, Mayor, Madam Clerk, and Board of Trustees for attending and attending residents of South Village. EMA in the last two weeks responded to four calls for service as follows. On February twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty, accident at seventeen oh nine, South Trail, took an hour. Um, February twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty, accident, uh, with a semi versus a car on Lincoln Highway by truck, by the truck scale. February twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty, assisted, assisted, uh, South Village Police Department and Major Crimes Task Force and Illinois State Police with investigation. Um, that, that was a nine-hour task. And then February twenty-ninth, assisted other agencies, uh, to creep, to creep Fire Department with obstruction fire. Thursday the twelfth of March, South, uh, twenty-twenty, South Village EMA will be attending our SMART meeting, uh, hosted by Cadet City, and also EMA is still looking for members to join the department. Says, "Thank you, Mayor, Madam Clerk, Board of Trustees for attending the res, and, and attending residents." This would conclude the end of my report. Uh, Alan Vavrick, EMA Director. Okay, reports of trustees and standing committee, again, uh, Public Safety Trustee Gary Bell.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, my committee's meeting will begin on Tuesday the seventeenth at the Fire Department, eleven AM. That concludes my report.
Public Sa, Public Services. Public Service Committee Trustee Bernie, uh, Bernie Groh.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to piggyback on some of the things that the Public Works Department, uh, stated in his report. I just want to say that the nine people, they have had, tried to do as much work as they can, uh, they, uh, we have been hindered with the, uh, kind of financing that we have been getting for the village, which, uh, equates, equates to about zero. So there's nothing much that has been done in the village for the last three years, and this is something you guys should know.
Forty-six.
Uh, he said twenty-six years, but, I mean, I'm just coinciding on three years. But however, uh... The funding is not there. However, trustees are working on trying to get into funding. There's only nine people to help with Public Works, and we need, uh, additional personnel. So we're working as diligently as we can to try to get money in here to do, uh, infrastructure repair. As you know, some of these places haven't been touched since nineteen seventy-three. So, uh, you can do work if you don't have any money, so we need to find out whether I need others. And that's the end of my report.
Budget and Finance Committee, uh, Trustee Roger Grant.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to say thank you for the trustees that, uh, gave me the comments. I do plan to take them back to the committee, kinda make those changes, and then also send them to the attorneys, uh, per, uh, what the Board requested, and then I should bring them back to a committee meeting in a couple of weeks, and then, uh, we'll see what happens from there. But that's all I have. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Housing and Government Relations Committee Trustee Sheri Jezeski.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, the Housing Committee will meet March twenty-fifth at seven o'clock in the boardroom, and I am looking for other members. If you're interested, please leave your name and your number where I can contact you at the front office, and they'll put it in my box. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Orders Review Committee Trustee Liz Todd.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, the next ordinance review committee meeting will be April thirteenth at six-thirty here in the Rotunda. Our committee met yesterday, and we have several ordinances that we're going to be presenting at the committee on the whole. Um, we took, you know, the Board's recommendation, talked about that, but the one thing I wanted to bring up is, the one ordinance what has to do that was, um, drafted by our attorneys, which had to do with the Attorney General requesting something as the protocol of the clerk duties, I think is how it read. Now, this should not come before our committee because it's drafted by our attorneys. So, per the direction of the Board, my, my request is that this needs to be voted on as soon as possible, and possibly at a special meeting on Tuesday. Now, I don't know if the Board wants to submit changes to the attorney, but the ordinance review would, would not be going over that because it was drafted by the attorneys.
Is this the one?
We do not, we do not go over the things that, because it was drafted.
Is this the one you're talking about, the duties of the clerk? Is that what you're talking about?
The one that the Attorney General is requesting that we, that the Board does, um, submits a thing.
Okay, did you say that, that, go ahead.
It's the protocol, the one that was given to us last week, the clerk submitted changes on it.
Okay, that's what I'm asking.
That's the one.
Is that the one for the, for the, um, the duties of something for, for the clerk? Is that the one you're talking about?
Per the binding opinion of the Attorney General, we had requested that our attorneys draft an ordinance. Yes, ma'am, we did.
I'm just, I'm, oh...
Well, it says an ordinance on mine. That's fine, but what was handed to us, Madam Clerk, was an ordinance, and the ordinance review committee is requesting, because we are, we will not review it when it's drafted by the attorneys, and the, and what should happen is that the Board, if they wanted to submit changes, should go before the attorneys, if they have questions or whatever. But this needs to be voted on as soon as possible because of the binding opinion.
Then my question is, were there changes made?
No. Our, our ordinance review, our ordinance review would not have made changes.
No, I'm asking, or, you're not talking about, were there changes made in open, at a committee meeting or anything? In other words, is this ordinance that you're talking about, was it, was it, I don't know about this one, it's got a lot of money, but were there changes made?
The ones, the ones that are in red is the one that the clerk had submitted last week to our committee on the whole.
So that's what I'm asking is, does this need to go in discussion before those votes? My question, that's all, that's the question I'm asking.
If it needs to be a discussion, but we're going to need to take a vote, we're going to have to do some type of special meeting, or we're going to have to get it voted on soon because of the binding opinion, opinion with the Attorney General.
Okay, let me ask the, um, attorneys, is this something, is there a deadline for this, or can it be voted on in two weeks, or is there a reason that it needs to be voted on next week? And, and talked about and voted on right away? That's basically what I'm asking.
Hey, if you recall, we prepared the ordinance, set the correction of the Board, you set the parameters, it was all agreed about how the process would work. It was just for getting minutes of meetings into the packet and getting the minutes approved and changes to the minutes. It's very straightforward, and based upon binding opinion, obviously, of the Attorney General.
Okay.
That you've been violating the open meeting act.
Only thing, that's what I'm asking, has it been agreed?
There have been no changes that have been recommended by any of the Board members.
I thought that, that looked like it had changes on it, but...
Those were the, but there has been changes brought forward to be filed for, then.
Okay, my question, my question, Mike. Mr. Attorney, my question is, does it need to go for discussion again before it gets voted on? You're saying that it was already voted on?
No, no, it was agreed on.
It was, okay, so you said it was agreed on by the Board?
By the corporatories. It was drafted at the direction of the corporatories. I was not told that there were any changes made by any of the corporatories. And I received a phone call from, uh, the clerk last week, uh, about five minutes before I was going into a deposition, and she raised concerns about some past ordinance and procedures and policies of the village clerk. I said, "That's a separate issue." This is an ordinance, just very straightforward, based upon the approval and passage of minutes.
Okay.
And getting the minutes online and entering the minutes book. And I said, "If you have an issue with that, bring it up to the Board." But the Board, I followed the Board's correction.
Okay. Well, the only thing I'm asking is, okay, they want to discuss. My question is, is there a reason for a deadline in the week between now and next week, or can it, can it wait until the following week? To call a special meeting, the same, that, that, I have no problem, I just wanted to know, is there a reason why it needs to be voted on next week versus the week after that? Because I'm sure this is gonna be on the agenda for next week for the committee meeting to discuss this.
I'll leave it up to you as a Board.
I'm just asking, is there a reason, is there a reason? I'm just, I'm talking about legality, is there a reason that it needs to be voted on right away, is basically what I'm asking.
As far as legality, if you've already been told it, it's all in a, a binding opinion that you're not following the open meetings act.
Mm-hmm.
You don't have to take as much time as you want.
Okay.
For me, I would take it very quickly and get a passed ordinance to the Attorney General's office to then show you're in compliance.
Okay, well, then, I mean, we can call, we can call a special meeting after, after that, but I'm just saying that, I just would like to have it go before the Board on record that this particular ordinance, as it was drafted and presented, is what they agreed on, and then we can go forth from there.
And I would ask if there's any changes by any of the Board members, or them to email me directly, and I'll make the changes.
Okay. Thank you.
With all due respect, I, I take directions from the corporatories.
What, what does that mean?
Yeah, what does that mean?
I'm just, son? I'm just wondering what the clapping means, I mean, he's just making this. Anyway, okay, um, I just wanted to find, I, I mean, we need, obviously, we need to discuss it. We need to make sure what we're presenting is what is agreed upon, because I see changes, I see some things in there that are, that are in red, so if I can get a, if you can give me a clean copy that we can go without the red, or if, if it's gonna be with the red, then we need to make sure that's what we're, um, going to talk about discussing beforehand. Because if I get anything that has red, and quite naturally, it draws a red flag to me that some of this is, is questionable. So I just wanted to make sure, if that's what it is, and the Board agrees on whatever, that's in the record saying the Board agreed on X, Y, and Z, and we can move forward to pass that, that's all I'm asking.
Okay, have you, I said a clean copy again, any changes in that clean copy? I'll call for you. If you just give it to me outside, or if you can get out your heart.
All right, thank you. Thank you.
We can't hear, can't hear.
I know it was so nice, but you know, you guys can just, you all can listen.
I'm just always saying...
I said to you, Mr. Attorney, why, when we talked, and you admitted that we talked, and I said I had some recommended changes, I'm asking, why did you tell me, after they're all together, to send them to you, if now you're saying to me that you were only entertaining changes that come forth by the corporate authority? And then, no, before you answer, then I have another question. Because I do, I'm not one of the corporate authorities, but I do sit on this board, and I am an administrator and an elected official. Are you saying to me then, that if something was to happen where the village clerk is concerned, there is no representation through Odellson and Stirk that I'm discounted? I need...
Well, initially, with our conversation, I said if you had changes or issues with any of the ordinance for the minutes, I said, "Bring it to the board." I never said for you to send it to me, because, well, the problem with that is you never sent me anything. I got a copy of your revisions from a trustee, you never sent me any revisions.
Okay, well...
And I know that the mayor don't like us to go back and forth, but I don't have an opportunity to talk to you, cause you're always too busy when I make a phone call to you. However, as I explained to the trustees, that it made no sense to send to you to piecemeal different changes, one by one, and that after they were all compiled, we could send, and agreed upon is what I said. And agreed upon, then we would send you that, so that they can be, the changes can be made. So that you're not making changes that the trustees are not in agreement. I mean, it just makes sense. And not one trustee, and we didn't talk, I didn't talk to all of them, but the one that I talked to definitely did not say that there was a problem with that process. But I, I'm just trying to understand, how come each time you come before this board, there's always just a little bit of consternation where the village clerk's office is concerned in these minutes? True, you have a binding operation, we have to do that. Is there a deadline in that document? Did she give you a date to have everything done? The reason why you guys are constantly just pushing through one ordinance after the other, only to turn around and have to amend it? The same as we're getting ready to do with the housing and the inspections? We're getting ready to do, redo that? We just voted on that a couple of weeks ago. You push through stuff too fast. Let's take a moment, because we're gonna still be at, oh, no, I, I was recognized. We're gonna...
This has absolutely nothing to do with, uh, what's on...
But we're talking ordinances and rushing through ordinances. I'm just saying, let's, let the trustees review it and communicate about it collectively. Not behind the scenes, that you all constantly do with your individual conversations. Let's do, let's be open and honest.
Madam, okay, Madam Plurk, um, we can get that from you, um, by next week, or before next week, and we can review it and then, uh, have it, I'll put it, have it on the agenda to review this, uh, particular ordinance, and, uh, we can go from there. If we need to have a special meeting afterwards, uh, on that same day, we can do that. That's not a problem.
My only question is, what would you want from me?
I just want a clean copy.
But a clean, but I said a clean copy.
The one I got had the red on it too, it is in my office.
But, again, those were changes by the clerk. If any of the trustees made any of those changes, if they can let me know.
So you're saying that the clerk's changes, we're not gonna incorporate, does that what you're saying?
It's up to the board to vote on that, but if you want a clean copy...
No, no, what I'm, okay, what I would need, because we need to vote on whatever, we don't need to vote with red in it. We need to vote on it that's clean, that, that everybody agreed to. So you're saying that the one that I have that has the red on it, that's what the clerk has, has put in? So you're saying that doesn't, you're not, you're not, you don't wanna present that? You wanna present one that doesn't have those?
No, 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 if the, if the board is fine with those changes, then...
So then I, then I'll ask this question, then. What we can do is two things. We can get it, uh, I guess, I don't know if everyone has a clean, I call a clean copy without that, or incorporate that and make that the copy. If the board doesn't like that particular one, they can vote on the one that doesn't have those in there. So we can have two separate ones next week, by next week, present it to the board, have it at the committee meeting, and if we need to have a meeting afterward or a special meeting, we can have that special meeting after the committee meeting, after we do the discussion. Thank you. Um, next item is, um, I'm sorry, Public Events Trustee Deborah Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, yesterday, uh, we did have a very, um, great meeting with a lot of outside entities that were talking about abandoned buildings and what we can do with the properties to keep them from demolition. But today, we also had a very good meeting, talk with Tanya. She's not here to speak on it, so I'll speak on it for her. We had several people from outside the community and inside the community. We had two pastors, as well as several people that were interested in what the talk with Tanya is focusing on, is Saw Village beautification, and some of the people that were here today were also focusing on options for our youth. So the talk with Tanya is actually the second Tuesday of every month. It was actually a very good meeting, and the, and, and the people that are attending are growing. But getting back to the Public Events Committee, there's a new calendar on the back table. Um, I try to update it as much as possible. So if you have an old calendar, please pick up a new calendar. We have on, um, the, the events that are coming up this Saturday, from eleven to one, is the Cook County Treasurer Maria Pappas's office will offer help with property tax problems. The treasurer's staff will assist homeowners searching for seventy-nine million dollars in available refunds, apply for forty-four million dollars in missing senior citizen property tax exemptions, and to check if their property taxes are delinquent. That will be held in the Saw Village Senior Center this Saturday from eleven to one. The new events that have been added to the calendar is the Saw Village and, uh, beautification and cleanup project is tentatively scheduled for June sixth. That came up today in the talk with Tanya for the beautification. In June, we also have the Fireman's Golf Outing on June twenty-seventh, and we've added another recycling event, which has been confirmed for July twenty-fifth, from nine AM to eleven AM. We'll be collecting medicine, document shredding, electronics, and one TV is this Monday, the sixteenth, at five-thirty. We'll be focusing, uh, we'll be reporting on the tax workshop, reviewing our calendar, talking about the youth programs that we're working on, the newsletter, and the fundraising. And one last thing I'd like to mention is that the Crossroads Church is doing a Saint Patrick's Day Corned Beef Dinner. If you wanna have corned beef before you come to the meeting next Tuesday, from four to seven, Crossroads Church would be glad to accommodate you. And if you wanna talk to me, I can get you carryouts, or I can get your dinner reserved. And thank you very much, that concludes my report.
Reports of committees and commissions, senior advisory council, Chairman Emmett Farmer.
Thank, thank you, Mayor and trustees. Our next meeting for the senior advisory council is Thursday, March twelfth, at five o'clock, all are welcome. And also at four PM, on the same day, will be having our senior club meeting. Uh, for more information on the senior club membership, you can contact, uh, contact me. Also, come out and join our seniors for breakfast bingo every second and fourth Friday from eleven AM to twelve PM. Also, seniors, don't forget game night, every first and third Friday. Come for card games, such as Vidwist, and other games from six PM till ten PM. Also, committee members will be teaching Vidwist from six PM to seven PM. Uh, and that's every first and third Friday, for those that, uh, do not know how to play and wanna learn. Also, the seniors, we, uh, hosting a noonday Vidwist on this Wednesday, March eleventh. Uh, for more details, contact Vice Chairman Arnold Coleman, and you can reach him at seven seven three five three one zero six nine nine. Also, seniors, our first senior lunchtime of the year will be held Thursday, March twenty-sixth. For, uh, March twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty, from eleven, eight nil to two PM, uh, in the senior center. There's no cost to senior club members, and five dollars for everyone else. So we say it pays to, uh, to be a, be a member of our senior club now, or you don't have to pay to be a member of our senior club. Open to, uh, it's open to all individuals, our senior club membership is fifty years and older. And, uh, contact committee member Deborah Coney at seven oh eight seven one zero four five six four. Also, if you, uh, do not wanna have a, or pay the five dollars for your, for the senior lunchtime, and we expect to have some really good food on that day, you can actually become a member of the senior club on that day and not have to pay anything. Alright, but we do want as many seniors as possible to join our, uh, senior club and get these, uh, benefits. And that's all I got, thank you.
Thank you. Um, next item, new business. I'll accept the motion to approve the accounts payable and disbursements dated March eleventh, twenty-twenty, for four hundred and twenty-six thousand, five hundred and ten dollars and seventy cents. Moved by trustee Bell, second by trustee Juzinski, any questions? Madam Plurk.
Trustee Juzinski?
Yes.
Trustee Todd?
Yes.
Trustee Williams?
Yes.
Trustee Bell?
Yes.
Trustee Gruber?
Yes.
Trustee Grant?
Yes.
Motion carried. I accept the, um, motion for the resolution outlining, outlining an agreement between Saw Village and the South Suburban Mayors and Managers.
So moved. Second.
Moved by trustee Juzinski, second by trustee, I'm sorry, moved by trustee Bell, second by trustee, uh, Gruber. Any questions?
Trustee Todd?
Yes.
Trustee Williams?
Yes.
Trustee Bell?
Yes.
Trustee Gruber?
Yes.
Trustee Grant?
Yes.
Trustee Juzinski?
Yes.
Motion carried. I'll entertain a motion for the resolution establishing a complete street policy for the village of Saw Village.
So moved.
Moved by trustee Williams, second by trustee Juzinski, are there any questions? Madam Plurk.
Trustee Williams?
Yes.
Trustee Bell?
Yes.
Trustee Gruber?
Yes.
Trustee Grant?
Yes.
Trustee Juzinski?
Yes.
Trustee Todd?
Yes.
Motion carried. I'll entertain a motion to approve the collecting of quotes for the infrastructure repairs.
Second.
Moved by trustee Bell, second by trustee Juzinski, any questions? Madam Plurk.
Trustee Bell?
Yes.
Trustee Gruber?
Yes.
Trustee Grant?
Yes.
Trustee Juzinski?
Yes.
Trustee Todd?
Yes.
Trustee Williams?
Yes.
Motion is carried. I have number twelve, general comments on the mayor board of trustees, and start with trustee William.
I have no comment.
Trustee Bell?
No comment.
Trustee Grant?
No comment.
You don't have, trustee Juzinski? Trustee Gruber?
No, no comment.
Trustee Todd?
No comment. And look what time it is.
Oh, wow.
Do y'all have some of that, that, um... That's okay. I'll accept the motion, I don't have anything, um, other than, uh, be careful. And, um, I, I forgot to say that, um, I didn't know that the, the fire chiefs, after the third time, you should wash your hands, so I, I did not know that. I thought, you know, so, that makes sense. But anyway, keep your hands and be careful. Be careful where you go, and be careful conscious of what you touch. With that being said, I'll accept the motion to adjourn.
So moved. Second.
It was moved by trustee Bell, second by trustee Todd, all in favor?
Aye.
Good evening.